Well, for you driving.
Many vans, many vans, that's when the kids were little. Twenty-two years ago.
I wonder. Well, so. You've been happy?
Yeah.
I will get turn that radio down. He's got a big.
Really pushing.
I am in the bed. So. Um, that's all good. He's not anybody. Well. Inside. But yeah. I think. Nice. Right. But. It's. Nothing else. You're taking the pizza, aren't you? And we're gonna.
Well, there's.
Things that show.
A little bit higher.
That are being.
No.
And more fiction. And put them in some. Not even a minute. Well, it's not. One.
Well, I asked me. Um, he. And everybody. Um, you know.
Right. I don't know.
You know, that's also. There's my. Uh, changes of the. Some of the. For. The. The. One. Three. Or one. Something. 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 Yeah. Well, then. Yeah. Okay. It's it's stay the same. It's moving from one section to another section, but not all the way.
But. Well, you know, there's. Things. They're always. I didn't see that. All of it. It's like. Only maybe. Maybe some of the stuff. There's. Some violation.
No, the people.
Really couldn't even know that.
My.
Property. Yes. Well. Okay. So. You know, it's good way. But like. They're also.
I'm sure. They use. Everybody. Oh, they actually. They want to. They use. You know. Okay. Okay. They're like. I moved in like eighty-four. And I'm already. Well, then. I thought it sounded as though we could recently. Well, it's just a morning. But. Yes.
It was. I think so. Four minutes. I think. That was. For. I think.
I'll look at it. My. On that. Thank you. That. I was. Going. To. Say.
Very high. The sugar. Oh, really. So. You said. The cold. Yeah. I'm not sure. You. Tell me. Even today now. That. Make a good. Sure. Ah, I know. Well. Yeah. Yeah. Well, guys. So. You know. That is. Yeah. What? And. I. Yeah. I didn't pay. Well. He was about. You know. Yeah. Yeah, I know. Just okay. I didn't know. Everybody. Right.
I mean.
Ah. The ball. I was. Here.
Yeah.
My. My. But. It's already. Taking. It.
Cheating kids.
From. Very. Nation. I. I.
I don't. I don't. I didn't. Last night. Just. When I was. When I was my twenties, I looked at. Long Gina. Oh, yes. I read this brush hour traffic during certain periods. And I was starting in. And. He. First. Then. I said. It's really going real. And it's most. People. Travel. Rather. Or whatever reason. And it's. So. I'm going to be dragging. The. And. Frank. It's. And. Oh.
Yeah. Sure. You know, they're. That. We just said. Kind of.
Well. Okay.
I just got. The. For. Stay. Yeah. Tomorrow. We're not.
Check it out. You know.
By that. We.
Much. Somebody was Wednesday. And. Yeah. Of course. I'm really. We're. Happy. Credit. From. Like. This is. Serious. So. We. We.
We butchered. That was. Yeah. Yeah. Pretty. Drat. I'm just. Trying. But. Yes. Yeah. I got started with. Life. Back in college. I don't know. I can say. It's. I don't. That. Um. Yes. Uh. No. Down. I love. That.
Boy. I just. Left today. And we. Through. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Same. It's. I. I'm. You. Maybe. Tell me. If. I'll. Say. You. Very. Very. I think. Brandon. Sam.
Yeah. I've seen. That. But.
But. I've got any. Brandon. See. I'm. I mean.
Yeah. I've seen. It. Also. I. Um.
What I like is a lot of these different series. For. Four. It's. Sorry. So. I. Right. So. It creates all these. Correctors. And. And. Then. After a while, it sounds like. They. They all. Remember. Each other. Is on. I just have a. A. Arm back. Universal. Size. It's. It's another. Come in. Otherwise. The. I would say just being able to create a different girl. When. She's. Certain. Sections. One of his magic. He started out. Yeah. He was. Three. Numbers. He's. The. President. Um. He was. One. Which. Was basically. Or. Around. So. I. Really. Well. So. And. They. To. Regrow. And. I. I think. You. Don't. Be. Hard.
That was not TV, right? There was.
You know. But. He started a series on Amazon Prime. So. And.
I think. Who's the first time? So.
Well. We've talked about. That. I'm. Looks. And. He's. But. He's. Can manage. There. There's. Multiple. I know. Characters. Yeah. One thing that I love about casting is just. A lot of difference. And. And. When I. On. Them. Parts of our country in which they're. Laughed. It's like, actually, it makes more sense. Like, it shouldn't be. Just your typical European. Movie. But. And, yeah. I think. You know. About.
Right. Bill. Now. The. Philo. Say. Car. Down. See.
Oh.
Between. Remotes. There. Are. You. So. There. First. Yeah. Oh, my God.
I don't. You know. It's. Everybody. About. That. I'll say. Yeah. Yeah. They. Are. They. They wish. They thought of the game. No. We can leave. It. Okay. All. Right. On. Her. I don't. Know. What. It's. We did. Some. From. Point. I heard. That. Actually. It's got. Thank you. For. The. Yeah. I'm. Just. Think. About. The. Cross. Yeah.
And. The. Former. One. That. The river. Off. Keeping. It. So. That's a serious. You.
That's. That. You're already set up. So. We. Like. When. They. They never. And.
You're. You know. He did. Not. I see. I don't. I can give. You. One of the names. Of course. Is. Well. I'm the boss. You know. I'm. Built. Or. And.
Yeah. My mind. Was. Gone. But I'm sure it's. Arrow. Very. Okay. Okay.
You. Go. Get. It.
Which. Right. I don't. Say. At all.
So, yeah.
But. That's. That's very interesting. It's like. Um. There are. There. There are this. Animal. People. They. Um. Whatever. They were very. Relational. And. Definitely. Well. Say. Because they can. About. They know. So. They had their own. Rule.
Okay.
But.
Um. That's cool.
And he's. They're. They're just.
Circle forty. And about.
And they have these gates as they use together. And. And, um. Yeah. They hate each other. So. When they fight, do it actually. So. I use. Actually. As. For. You know. They're. Just call it. And. Um. So. Take. Where you want to go.
That's Riverwood?
It's. I don't know. That. This is one. Um.
Same. On. There. You. Like. That. Was. There.
Yeah. Same. Like. Um. Yeah. That was. That's. You know. A lot. Of yours. To. More. Days. Full. Yeah. It.
I. Wouldn't. Do. It. That's. What. We're. Here. Is. The. Way. To. Go. On. You. Do. This. Um. All.
And. And. Which. A lot of here is. To. More. And like the reference. She. Know. I'm. Like. Students. And.
All right. We got. Thirty. That's. First. To. The. The. I'm. Holy. Witch. And. I'm. I'm. She's. Second. I'm. Different. Lives.
Being. They.
Father. It's. So. Much. And. One. Nation. Uh. Uh. It is. Well. The. Team. Plus. So. Well. Come. And. Right.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Harding.
Here.
Mr. Maguire.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Ms. Bo.
Here.
We've got a forum. We have got a meeting. Uh. Before we move forward, as we noted the last meeting. Uh. We're going to begin each meeting with the civility pledge. The first meeting, I'd like Mr. Harding to raise the civility pledge at once. Well, let's see. In interest of civility. I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas but achieving that objective. Thank you. And. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Uh. May first, two thousand twenty-three.
So move. Selecting the athlete.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Deatley to approve the minutes. Uh. We got two sets. Yeah. Two sets. Uh. The new. The old board minutes of May first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh. Are any comments, questions, or additions to those minutes? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion so carries. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the new board minute meeting. Uh. May first, two thousand point three.
Approved. Done.
Second. On. Moved by Thomas, seconded by Harding. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the new board meeting?
I do. Um. It noted that Stephen Deatley was attended in person, but he also was swearing into office in that one. Would he still be counted as in person for the attendance at the beginning?
Probably.
Okay. And then also, it just says that the service club will be holding a gold outing. And while that sounds wonderful, I think we should just correct it to golf.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Well, we were really looking for. Oh. Duly noted, and thank you.
You're welcome. Sir. Appreciate you.
You're on the list.
I know.
Yeah. Subject to that. Subject to the changes now. The. They've just been made. Any other corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay.
To be placed on the agenda. And then, once the meeting is called to order and it is determined that we have a forum in the room, we will then vote upon the ability of the other individual for a tendering motion. So that's the process. And you're only allowed to do that for family and vacation. That's it. No business. Health and business. Those are the only two. You cannot be on vacation every month. You can be out of town on business and make it. And if you're in the hospital, you can make it. If you're at the coroner's office, don't bother. Uh, okay, uh, moving on from the proclamation, uh, we've done the civility pledge. There's just a couple of things here. I'd like to welcome the three new members to the board. Uh, this is their first real meeting. The first one was rather abbreviated. Uh, you now all should have your laptops. I'm sorry it took us a while to get that. Uh, we are a little slow on some things like that. Uh, we don't have the staff. We contract that out. We had to pass them on down the line. But you now got your laptops. You've got your emails. Uh, that's the easy part. There is no flash drive to give you. You can stick them inside of your skull and go, ah, this is it. I've got everything now. The best thing I can advise you is just read a lot. Uh, one of the easiest things is to go back to the minutes. And it's especially a lot easier now that Eugene's got them on the website. You can just check them, check them off as you go through. But if you go back twenty or thirty years, ah, seriously, it's, you know, twice a month, but you'll get thirty, forty years worth of information and history on that. The other item that you need to pay attention to is your budget, is the budget. Uh, we've all got a portion of that budget that we're somewhat responsible for. And Eugene will help you with both sections. So, uh, building, you've got village property, you've got a section in the budget. Courtney's got water and sewer section in her budget. You just watch the whole budget, Mark. That's the situation. Uh, Ed has the roads and parks. Kelly will have the ICCI, the building codes. You have a very small budget, so you've got to be very careful. We pretty much have that as a wash, what comes in goes out. So, that's, you know, we need difficult ones to be careful on that one. And then Steve has the police department. So, I just had newsletters, uh, or not newsletters, but minutes. And newsletters, if you want, you can go read those too, but the minutes are the ones that will tell you, you know, what's been going through, uh, this board in the past. Uh, one item on procedures, the attorney and the engineer, you need to speak with them. You can go through me. I watch their budgets. So I, I'm the gatekeeper on the attorney and the engineer. Uh, now, uh, Kelly, or not Kelly, but Courtney's got a little bit more latitude on that with the engineer, uh, and the water and sewer. Because they're almost on a daily, sometimes basis that you guys act, we know that. So, otherwise, if you need the engineer or the attorney, let me know, you know. And if you go around me, he'll call me or they'll call me and let me know. So, uh, the other item I want to cover is, uh, the waiving of fees, penalties, fines. It's gonna come up. Somebody's gonna come and say, hey, I got this ticket. What can you do? You can't do anything. You can tell them you will take it to the board, but only the board can make those decisions. Okay? The only person that's got an exemption, once again, is Courtney with water. And I believe you've got maybe a fifteen or twenty dollar late fee that you can wait. That's in the ordinances. Other than that, the rest of us, if anybody comes, the police have a couple of websites, the forms, that you can direct the residents to to fill out. If they come to you and say, you know, hey, I got this speeding ticket. I don't think I was doing fifty-seven miles an hour in a twenty-five mile zone. Fines, direct them to the website, let them file it. Otherwise, you can bring that item to the board, but we cannot personally give them any waivers on those things. Uh, let's see, the only other thing, well, I said, this is just a bunch of OJT, it's on the job train. We've got a question, Holly. Uh, and, uh, we've got a staff that'll be here to help you out anytime you need it. Moving on, uh, service club. Richard usually here. Uh, Mr. Florence, if you'd like to take the message back. The service club at one point, uh, approached the village about utilizing garden boxes in the, uh, community garden area. The engineers have looked into that on our behalf. There will need to be a permit obtained from the Kane County Stormwater, uh, people. Uh, the engineers have charged the village four hundred and twenty dollars. The permit is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the village will pick up the four twenty to the engineer. If the service club will pick up the two seventy-five for the permit.
Uh, I'll present it to them.
Okay. All right, just let us know. And if it's doable with them, we'll put that on future, uh, agenda items. All right, appreciate it. Okay, and that's it for the clerk's, or for the president's report, clerk's report.
Uh, several things. First of all, I handed out to all of the, uh, new board members a, uh, email that I received from King County, uh, clerk's office regarding yet another filing of economic interest statements. Uh, you have to get it in by the end of this month to avoid any kind of penalty. It's a fifteen dollar late fee that, uh, you're, uh, you'll be charged, however, because of the, uh, the fact that you're newly elected. And this is only, what, the third or fourth time that you've had to fill that form out. Uh, uh, they're gonna, they're not gonna charge you for it if you get it in by the end of the month. The other thing that I've added, uh, is just some miscellaneous, uh, items of the meeting that, uh, a, uh, some, uh, kind of a cheat sheet, or if you will, for parliamentary motion practice. Just something that'll let you get familiar with the whole process. Uh, all of this here, does it come naturally to people, uh, myself included? And so this is a little FYI for information. And finally, uh, to echo what President Pickett suggested about reading the minutes, I would also recommend you reading some of the early, early file material. Uh, 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 for anyone on the board that wants to see a copy of the, you know, files that we keep. Um, uh, I'd be more than willing to share that with you. However, under the business records requirement, they cannot leave the building. They have to stay here. So if you want to take a look at these things, and some of them are back on carbon papers. Yeah, that's how old they are. You have to be very careful with them. Uh, just give me a call. We can make arrangements. I can come down. I, you know, we put, put you in one of the rooms and, and give you a mask so that and you can read to your heart's content. There's some very, very, very interesting things in there. Uh, and I would certainly recommend that from an educational standpoint. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. One quick thing, uh, got a seminar coming up on, uh, new elective official indoctrination.
Yes.
Uh, with the Metro West Council coming up, I believe, on thirteenth and fourteenth, sometime in June. Right. I'll be getting an email from that. Uh, to members of Metro West, which we are, there is no charge. Non-members, it's twenty-five dollars. It's, uh, morning, about four hours in Geneva. And I recommend it highly. It's really good. Ms. Tockins has been doing it a number of years, and she's extremely familiar with this. Good orientation. Okay, uh, planning and zoning. There's no report this evening, attorney. There is no report. The engineer has left us with an item on the agreement with IDOT so that we may continue with our street program for twenty-three. What page is that on? There we go. Uh, what behinds engineering preparation needs from us this evening is the engineering agreement, B L R zero five five two zero, to be approved. This basically is stating that the village is in agreement with the uh, engineers and that we will pay the engineers preliminary inspection and engineering inspection at the agreed amounts. And those amounts are in the, uh, letter. It's, uh, two percent for preliminary, one percent for engineering inspection, and then it moves to three and three, and four and four, and five and five, to five and six. So it's been upon various grades of engineering that are required. This is a requirement by the state in order for IDOT to process the inspection and get back to us as to whether or not we are good to go. So if we could have a motion to approve the engineering agreement with the engineers, that is, engineering agreement, B L R zero five five two zero, for the twenty-three, uh, street program.
So moved, Deatley?
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thorne to approve the engineering agreement, B L R zero five five two zero for the twenty-three street program. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Remember, folks, this is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and two thousand dollars. We got Hazel Court, Jill Peak, Timber Drive, Sleepy Hollow Road, uh, Hemlock, Locust. Got quite a bit going on in the next year, so. Okay, no other questions or comments?
I have a question. Um, I noted in the last meeting, there is some water main, uh, project that was going on, and the prices ended up tripling, so we're only, we have a third of that done. With this cost that we're looking at here, this is for actual work as well, not just the inspection. So how much, do we have anything itemized out as to?
That's all in the, the quarter.
It's, it's all in there.
The inspections and everything, all those fees are in the quarter for you too.
Okay.
Okay. What will happen is that the state will review the paperwork and say, yes, we agreed, this is within your jurisdiction or realm. And we can go out to bid. We will then send this out to bid with all the requirements that we have.
Okay.
Then, after about a month, we will take the bids and review the bids against what we've got. And that's when we'll find out whether or not we get three hundred and two thousand dollars worth of work or whether we give it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Sometimes bids come in low and we get to add to it. Sometimes bids come in high and we've got to drop. And what we're seeing now is bids coming in extremely high. So, it's, you know, been reported throughout the, the area. Don't know quite what it is. The, of course, spring construction season, but I think a lot of it is the federal dollars that are coming into infrastructure repair. Have got a lot of people jumping into the business. And they've sharpened their pencils and they're coming out now, you know, looking for the jobs. But the prices have gone up in the last three years.
Yeah.
So, we shall see. Okay, no other questions? Continue the roll call, please. Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dally?
Hi.
Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi.
Ms. McGuire?
Hi.
Mr. Hurney?
Hi.
Six permanent votes, no negative votes, so carries. Now over to the engineer, and hopefully shortly, we will get to bids. All right, next is Director of Finance, Van.
Uh, we're not gonna be doing the warrants. Um, I need to follow my sort. I forgot to remind the clerk to put the warrants on the agenda, so we'll do those next time. Um, we do need a resolution or authorization, uh, signatures for the bank, since, um, there's been a change in the board. Uh, we need to redo all the signature cards for all the different banks. So, um, that would be myself, President Pickett, and, uh, Trustee Thorne will be the signers for the, uh, all the accounts.
And that'll be resolution five five three. We have a motion to so approve resolution five five three.
I move.
Second, Deatley.
Moved by Bo, seconded by Deatley to approve resolution five five three, designating Eugene Van, Martha Thornstaff, and Pickett as signators for the village of Sleepy Hollow. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Van, not. Roll call, please. Mr. Dally?
Hi.
Ms., uh, Thomas?
Hi.
Ms. Poe?
Hi.
Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Ms. McGuire?
Hi.
Mr. Hurney?
Hi.
I, I know I'm gonna mess up what you said. And, and I apologize to the fans. Okay, six permanent votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries. Wow.
Um, there's a lot of, I mean, I'm at our, um, auditors. We're here today to do the preliminary audit, so maybe they've got their stuff, they, and they're gone. So we won't see them back until the end of August. Well, where they're gonna do the, the rest of the, the audit. Um, also, I provided all the information to the state for the, um, MFT audit that they do. So they're, they're all happy with that. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Eugene. Uh, comment from the public. Mr. Corano, one meeting, thirty days away.
In one of my shirt. Anthony Corano, five twenty-two Stevens Court, just wanted to welcome the board members, who have a couple ahead of you, but know you got lots of work. Cause I'm old, I also made a couple notes, and just wanted to briefly read them. Um, I'd like the village board to consider public comments addressed by the respective trustee and limit that conversation to five minutes as well. I know that, you know, the residents make their comment. I know it's not a question and answer session. But I think what it might do is it makes for more open dialogue. And at least consider responding to comments made by the residents. Uh, it'd be nice to see maybe if that's brought up as a motion on the new business this evening. My thought is that if a particular resident has a question on water, or on permits, or on building, that that respective trustee just addressed it briefly. They're also limited to five minutes. You don't want the meeting to last to midnight, which never has happened in the four years I was on the board. Um, the other thought, I love the civility pledge. I think it's awesome. Uh, I would, I would ask that, uh, the trustees elected to read the civility pledge at each meeting. Should then select the resident to take the pledge as a representative of the people attending the meeting. I believe this will lead to a less combative meeting. And, you know, I, I know that that would have to be done ahead of time. Uh, you know, because you don't wanna ask a resident that you may not know, or a resident that may not be willing to do it. But I think it just might be a little more cohesive as a room than as a organization. Um, in closing, uh, it's actually nice to be on this side of the table, to be honest with you, and, uh, good luck to everyone. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Okay, and next one is Ryan Kirkley?
Hurdle, you got it. Um, yeah, I just, informal question. I think it's already been brought up, maybe informally. Um, I have an inquiry to the position of the shed that's on Sleepy Hollow Elementary School. It's been asked, but it's hitting dead ends. Nobody can seem to provide an answer of how that would put up the permits that were allowed for it, or how it's allowed to stay, given our village code. Um, so, I don't know, just looking to anybody can chase that up the chain. Um, I've spoke to other trustees about it, but nobody can seem to find an answer back, so. I don't know. I can supply an email address if you wanna get in touch with me directly, or have someone I can reach out to further than a trustee.
Send me an email?
With that?
You can send me an email.
I can send you an email. Um, but yeah, any paperwork, permits, or whatever, I can forward to people I work with that are interested in knowing also. That'd be, but that's all I have.
That'd be a FOIA request. That will be a FOIA request, and you should submit that to the clerk.
I can do that.
And, and the former is on only.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. All right. Uh, on to the rest of the agenda. Uh, Rogan Parks, Mr. Hurney.
Uh, just a quick comment. Are you sure everybody understands, on the president's report, if a resident calls an engineer or our village attorney, we all pay for that. In other words, we're charged for that. That's why it goes through the president. He's not protecting the fight tomorrow.
Protecting my budget.
Um, let's see, the playground, uh, talked to them today. They're hoping to be completed by the end of the week. Um, they heard there was a concern, there's a branch that's touching or almost touching the front roof, and that was a concern of somebody's. Um, that was just dusted planned for, from the very beginning. There's a real specialized tool that'll take care of that. It's called clippers. At the complete, when you see it completed, it will not have a branch obstructing the road over there. A multitude of other safety, uh, features that have been discussed. I'm not gonna go through all that tonight. But believe me, um, we're well aware of all the safety concerns, uh, that part construction entails. Let's see.
There's been people playing at it too. I'd said if they could do extra police, like surveillance, just go and buy it after. They, I think it's done about two thirty, three o'clock. There's been people playing at it about four, five, six o'clock, like, all week.
Inside the?
Inside the fence.
Just, if anybody sees that?
I picked them out of there twice.
Good. Yeah, I gave an eye on it too. The police, we've asked them to uh, routinely check that. So far, I haven't gotten, well, you, you can see it.
I can see, yeah. I hear usually, yeah. I have a camera right there, but yeah. Uh, but yeah, I've been, like, get out of there.
There's lots of holes built and, uh,
Yeah.
et cetera. So, yeah, good idea. Um, that's all I have during the conference.
All right, thank you. Uh, finance, Mr. Thorne?
Yeah, before I turn this over to, um, uh, Mr. Van, I would mention that the, um, um, finance committee meetings are gonna resume starting in September. Um, these are pretty much event based, so it's gonna have to do with uh, when the audit is done, and there's some insurance, I think, that's due that'll make sense to have them then, so. Uh, that's, we don't have a date just yet, but FYI, we're gonna be doing that first half of September, I would think. Mr. Van?
Um, as President Pickett had talked about, uh, we do an appropriation rather than a budget, and, uh, by special, we have to have this day before July thirty-first, so I like to try to get this done as soon as I can, uh, under the start of the uh, fiscal year. So, uh, in your package was, um, ordinance number twenty twenty-three, number seven. It's, uh, the appropriation in the amount of five million eight hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. If I am looking for a motion to approve that ordinance.
Oh, moved. I don't have to repeat.
Second.
Moved by Hurney, seconded by Thorne to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash seven, appropriation ordinance in the amount of five million eight hundred and seventy thousand dol- and five hundred and twenty, five, eight hundred and seventy, five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Okay, any comments, questions, or discussion? As I explained earlier, that is our legal spending amount. But you must take a look. It's a very unusual document. It has no income. It just says what we can spend. Doesn't tell us how we're gonna get it, or where we're gonna get it. Uh, but we go by the budgets. No, uh, comments, questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Dally?
Hi.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi.
Mr. Hurney?
Hi.
Ms. McGuire?
Hi.
Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Ms. Bowe?
Hi.
Six permanent votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries. Wow. Anything else, Mark?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Eugene. Uh, next item, the water and sewer. Ms. Bowe?
Um, I am just getting an understanding of water and sewage. I had a good meeting with Joe Nemec and Kyle Pillinger last week, and I'm getting the understanding of how the co- the village is run. And if you have any comments or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me, but other than that, there's no report.
All right, thanks. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley?
Uh, just one quick thing, and then it's police and public safety, just to remind everyone, tomorrow, there is a meeting at the Rackhouse Center for Randall over ninety. Um, this does affect our community and everyone in the community, so I would recommend that if you can be there, please be there. Um, I know they're having a long rain meeting tonight, and, uh, I've heard a few comments there, but, uh, definitely recommend you, uh, attend that. It's from six to eight at the Adult Activity Center at, uh, the Rackhouse Center, which is the Park District, uh, in Carpenterville. Yeah.
And if you're not familiar with the adult center, because I've gotten lost going in, you don't go in that main entrance with the exercises. You circle around as though you're going to Dolphins Cove, and then park over there, and it's, it's kind of a big meeting room, so.
And, uh, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. Uh, building and zoning, Ms. Thomas?
Um, much like Courtney, I'm just starting to get to know the positions, so, um, um, Tony here, she let me know that I can get some files from his office, learn positional a bit more. So I'll be doing that, you know, in the next week or so, so, I have no report.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, building and zoning, Ms. Thomas?
Um, no real report here. I did meet with the chief last Friday um, about the ordinance, uh, for RVs and everything, just to kind of get up to speed on what's going on and how that all came about, as I had some questions. So, again, like the other new board members, kind of been a learning curve here and doing some reading and, um, attended a, uh, building and zoning meeting last week and getting my feet wet there, so. Same, if anybody's got any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Old business, and the old business come before the board. Old business come before the board. New business, under new business, we've got the approval and purchase order for the traffic control signs. Uh, that, I believe, should be traffic, correct, or, uh, informative signs, they're not control signs, they're not stop signs or yield signs. They're the street signs.
Yeah, actually, on page sixty of your agenda, there is a long list of what's gonna be included in a purchase order. It, it's a few stop signs, mostly street name signs that are ongoing program to replace all the street signs. Uh, this is a big order. Um, and it includes all the installation hardware, but, um, so, it's a purchase order from Public Works for the amount of nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. That amount is over the minimum for the, for, uh, to be approved by one or two or more trustees who are required to board approval.
And just a little bit of history, this goes back to a project that we started three years ago, when it came to our attention that our street signs are not, uh, federal specification size. So we were, we felt we have to change on street signs to become compliant. Now, however, there is no timeline on this, so we have kicked this thing for, this has gotta be the third or fourth year. This is ten thousand dollars. I think originally we had estimated it was a hundred and some thousand dollar job.
Oh, yeah, this is, you know, we've spread out the cost.
But, um, yeah. It's like eating the elephant, one bite at a time. Uh, this one is nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents, and it covers, uh, a couple of dozen streets. So, you know, uh, you have a motion to approve?
True. I know.
Second. Moved by Thomas, seconded by Hurney to approve the wealth and traffic control and protection Inc. For the amount of nine thousand dollars, ninety-nine, nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents for the traffic curve for the direct, what do you call it, street signs? Okay. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? We're being done. Roll call, please. Mr. Dally?
Hi.
Ms. Bowe?
Hi.
Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi.
Mr. Hurney?
Hi.
Ms. McGuire?
Hi.
Six primary votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries. No? Uh, is there any other new business to come before the board this evening?
I move, we adjourn?
Yes, got it. Sorry.
Second.
Moved by, yeah, we seconded by Thorne to adjourn, and all in favor, signify by saying no.
Hi.
Roll call, we've got, we adjourn. All right, folks, it's a five Monday month. Enjoy the extra week, Bob.